It is seven o'clock and I will call the zoning board of appeals to order. This meeting is being recorded. It's my understanding that Sue Brown will be taking some notes of the minutes of the meeting because Gil is in another meeting. I have with me from the zoning board of appeals, John Benares, Catherine Howe, James Mitchell, Brian Solacy, myself, Sarah Melish, and Jim Dietrich. I do not see Sean Zorn. But we have a quorum, so we can proceed ahead. I'm going to open the continued public hearing of the application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as the Sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, to construct 136-unit apartment complex for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street, Assessor's Map number 43, Lot number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021. The, the purpose of this meeting is not to discuss the merits of the project, but rather to establish our process for selecting the peer reviewers. The way this process will work is that there are various items in the application and we will have a peer reviewer review all of those aspects under four components, help us understand what the, what we need to look at and to provide options for mitigating factors if we have concerns about anything in it. There are basically four segments that will be looked at. One is traffic and public safety. The other is environmental. The third is engineering site plan and geotechnical. And the fourth is architecture and landscaping. We are at the point where we have sent out RFPs to a couple of firms for the traffic and public safety, and we sent one out for environmental. The one we sent on environmental was to DeRosa, Michael DeRosa. They have determined based on input from their council that it's inappropriate for them to bid on this peer review due to the amount of work they provide to private citizens in Manchester that appears before the town boards. So they did give us a recommendation of another firm that, that we can contact. So today on the traffic and public safety, we've heard from Stan Tech, which is the firm that did the peer review of the traffic and public transportation as part of the LIP. And we've heard from BSC Group that came in very late today, and I'm not sure the extent to which members of the board had a chance to look at that. We also went out to VHB and they said that they did not have the capacity to, to provide us with the services. We have not gone out on engineering site plan and architecture and landscape, scaping. So one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight is, it appears to me that we have three firms before us that might be capable of being the peer reviewer for all aspects of the project. And that is Stan Tech, Stan Tech, BSC Group, and Beta Group. And I'm wondering what the board's thoughts are on that. Do we go out with different firms for each segment separately? Or do we look for a larger firm that can handle all aspects of it? Thoughts, John?
My, my initial reaction is to do it separately. I think just because these, these firms, they have their specialties and that's what they're experts in. Whereas these larger firms, you know, they frankly have a, like analysts do a lot of the work upfront and then someone reviews it at the very end and it's more of a good churn shop, if you will. So I prefer to stick with people who are experts in their field rather than just to have one larger firm handle everything at once. And I'm not sure if we even, have we even talked to a large firm that has capacity to, you know, all these different areas?
Well, the, the three that hit the list, and they're not necessarily large firms, but they're ones that appear to have the capability to handle all aspects. And that was Stan Tech, BSC Group, and Beta Group. Those are all local firms.
You're saying these firms can do traffic studies, phase one reviews, and then planning cost reviews?
The, the traffic and public safety, the environmental, the engineering site plan, and the architecture and landscaping. We obviously would have to ask them, but it appears from their websites they could handle.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I didn't realize that. I read a couple of the, the proposals, I think like the BSC one I just read, for instance. So that's fine. I mean, I know there are other firms that have like, you know, thousands of employees and they're more national firms. I would prefer to have a local firm, someone based in, in at least New England. So that's good to know.
Okay. So this, this is Catherine Howe. I'm going to agree with John on a couple of points. One, I would like to have a local firm. I think that that's important. And I have a slight preference for breaking this up amongst experts. I think sometimes if you farm it out to only one, one firm, there, there can be some, I don't know, compromises made about like, okay, well, we're going to be really hard on this one. Maybe we should be a bit, a little bit lighter on that one sort of thing.
There's some bias that creeps in for sure, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And so I, I would, my, my preference, I feel that it would be cleaner to have separate experts evaluate each of these areas. That's just my opinion, but that's just my initial feedback on that.
Okay. Um, Brian, oh, James, yep.
Not to be contrarian, I think there's a very real appeal for one-stop shopping. And I think that it would be premature for us to presume results before asking each of these three firms about their qualifications and expertise in each of the four areas. And if they can convincingly express to us that it would be unbiased and comprehensive and complete, that I think there's a certain amount of economy of scale and efficiency that would make the process easier on all of us. And not simply that ease is the only consideration, but I do think that I'd like to hear from those three firms how they would address the concerns that have been previously stated. And we could make a decision based on that rather than on any of us guessing who might, what might be the better solution. I personally don't know which would be the better solution, one-stop shopping or for individual consultants. So I would, I would defer to the people being considered to address those concerns and then, and then have us make a judgment based on that.
And I think we should also request sample reports in their responses. That's, I think, a must. We can't make any decision without seeing what a sample report looks like. And all these people should have that readily available to us. That's a standard ask.
Okay. Did, did you look at the other things that were asked for in the transportation RFP? And were there other things missing, John?
I didn't notice anything that was.
Sarah, this is Brian. James, I can't articulate it any better than he did. I think there are some, there is value to economies of scale. I think that if there, I believe all, I don't know where Stan Tech is. I think I read where BSC is out of Boston.
Yes, Stan Tech is Burlington.
Okay. The, I just think that why reinvent the wheel in that respect? Once we've got a company that's familiar with the, the entire site, the education can be, that education can be amortized across all the proposals. And I, and, and James said it right. Let him, let him show us if it's not going to be a problem. But that's just me.
Jim, any thoughts?
My, my only thought at the moment is I would like to know what Sue Brown has to say about all this. That is how she feels or what her opinions are of the selection process. And also our consultants, because none of us have gone through this before. We're all sort of flying blind, if you will. And so having some additional opinion at this point could be helpful.
Okay. Sue Brown, do you have an opinion?
I, I agree that there are some efficiencies from having a one-stop. And I think it is right, you need to be assured that they have the capacity to do all of those things. And I think the one thing that may, that some of those firms may not have is strict architectural, but I think it's different with, with each firm. And I know that Ezra probably had some advice, so I'm going to defer to Ezra now.
Mr. Glenn?
Ezra, you're on mute. Oh, we can't hear you, although you don't appear to be on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's, that's a bit better. Maybe even closer, or if you could turn it up some.
Yeah, it's a different microphone. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now? That's okay?
Need to speak louder.
How's that?
Much better.
Okay, sorry about that. So I was, I was saying that I, I agree with the concerns about making sure you get somebody good. I think all the firms you're looking at are, you know, are qualified. I think that the question about being sure you get individuals who are committed to the different elements, what you should do there is even if you have one firm, do the whole, do the whole thing. You ask for the resumes of the people who will be doing traffic, who will be doing engineering. So you'll know that. I think I would really agree with the, the points about the, the ease of coordination. This isn't about saving money necessarily. It's not your money, it's, it's the applicant's and we don't want to waste it. But you shouldn't make decisions based on saving money. You should make decisions based on a smooth process that works for you and gets from, from A to Z in a predictable way. And I think that's the trickiest thing. And the, the number one reason to have a single firm is, you know, right at the beginning, we may look at, say, traffic and public safety. And that's pretty clear, we're just looking at that. But as we get further in, there are going to be issues that come up around site planning or around stormwater that might relate to the traffic or where the parking lot is. Or when we get to landscaping, you know, that these, these issues kind of stack and relate. And that's where it can really help with the coordination, both in terms of having those experts talk to each other and also having the, the people at your meeting that you need. Because you don't want a situation where you say, you know, this, this Tuesday, we're talking about, you know, site plan and stormwater. And there's a question that is, well, how's that going to relate to the, to the traffic? Or we just wanted to get one more traffic study thing come in. It's nice to have everybody there. So I think there really is a benefit there.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll ask the board, are there, does anybody have other firms you think we should be considering? Because I know nothing on this.
I, I can't think of any local firms that offer the one-stop shop. And so, you know, I'm happy with however we decide, as long as we're not selecting, you know, an environmental firm that just dabbles in transportation and traffic studies, for instance. So on my end, I can't recommend anybody who's local that does that one-stop shop.
Sarah, this is Sean.
Oh, hi, Sean.
Hey. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't get in on you earlier because I was having some problems getting some volume going. But I kind of, I, I kind of go away from the one-stop idea myself. And I, the more we need, we need to explore this as much as we can with different groups to get, to get the best information we can.
So do you have any suggestions on other firms we should be considering?
No, I don't. And I'd have to explore more on.
Okay.
Sarah, it's James, can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
I think we should request proposals from all three of the so-called one-stop shopping firms. We can look at their credentials, their qualifications, the resumes of the key principal players and their representative examples of previous work. And then we can make an informed decision based on their proposal submission of who might be the best fit, both for this project and for the concerns that have been outlined here. That would be my vote. I, I really echo Ezra's summary about efficiency and about having people present at meetings that can straddle each of these four disciplines and make the process more efficient and more streamlined and simpler to understand. Because they'll have a comprehensive knowledge of the whole part rather than just their own sub-specialty. So I, I think there's a way to vet the three firms and then make a decision based on their submissions and their responses to our concerns.
Okay. I think I will call on Mr. Engler to see if he has an opinion on one-stop versus separate firms.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Jeff Engler from SLV School Street. I, I don't think there's a right answer. I mean, I think the firms you mentioned, Stan Tech, Beta, BSC, they're all big firms. They all have very capable professionals. I wouldn't worry about getting their B-team. I mean, these guys would not be in business. Likewise, if you get a separate traffic consultant, a separate civil, a separate environmental or wetland scientist, that can work too. There is something to be said of, as somebody mentioned, if you have it all in one in-house, it's easier for them to coordinate, you know, their respective kind of analyses. They're not going to another firm, but that doesn't mean it's the right answer. I mean, if it would help, if it would help the process, you know, listen, I've done a million of these. I can give lists of peer-reviewed consultants that have represented other municipalities before. You know, if it would be helpful, Ezra and Sue can vet that list and then maybe make a recommendation. Or I'll, or I'll let the, the board. But it doesn't sound like the board has a ton of other, you know, consultants in the offering ready to go. So if, if it would be helpful, I could provide a whole list of wetland scientists. And, and, and these are not people that work for me or represent developers. I can specifically say they represented the town of X. They represented the town of Y. Just throwing it out there, trying to be helpful, but if you don't need it, then forget I suggested it. So, and, and then the only other comment I'll make is the Board of Selectmen retains Stan Tech to review traffic. So there is some efficiency of having Stan Tech, who's very familiar with the plan, very familiar with the site, you know, represent the board again. I mean, they're a good firm, they're a good company. To me, that would make all the sense in the world because they've already been through it. And, and to be quite honest, the plan has not changed materially at all since what we were discussing with the Board of Selectmen. I think the zoning board's already aware of that. Likewise, Mr. DeRosa did a ton of work for the Conservation Commission. I understand that for whatever reason they've elected to pass, but that's disappointing because he has institutional knowledge on this site. Sounds like Stan Tech, though, is very much interested. So at least for traffic, whether or not you hire them for other services, seems to me like that they would make the most sense for traffic. But I, I mean, I don't, I don't have a, 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 a strong preference. It's obviously the board's decision. I, I've been in front of lots of boards that have used one big firm like a Stan Tech, like VHB, you know, does all of it, but it sounds like they're not. I, I don't know if you approach them just on traffic or if you approach them on everything, because they may be interested if you said, hey, listen, we're looking for a peer reviewer on, you know, traffic, environmental, civil, et cetera, just saying. So whatever the board wants, I mean, I think, you know, we'll be flexible. The firms you've identified are all professional. You know, frankly, these people go at it the same way. You know, there's not a huge difference in my experience between peer review consultants. I mean, some of it's stylistic, some of it may be presentation, but they're using all the same methodologies and references and the like. So I'll, I'll stop talking. I don't, I, hopefully that was somewhat helpful.
Okay, yeah, and we would, we would accept a few names from you if you're willing to give them to us.
Would, should I send those to Sue?
Yes, please. Sue, send them to Sue.
All right. And, and for those that I identify, I'll also identify the towns that they've represented.
Fantastic, thank you.
And I mean, I can suggest one more firm that I can think of, but they're more of a national firm. I don't know what, how people feel about that, but it's a firm that I'm familiar with. Partner Engineering and Science. They're a big firm, so I'm happy to connect people on that.
Okay. Okay, I now will move to the public. I see Dan Hill has his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Dan Hill. I, I represent the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust in this matter. And I just had a couple of quick comments on this issue of peer review. I, I actually, I, I do a lot of work with municipalities and with neighborhood groups and interest groups. And I've been to a lot of these hearings. And I, I actually think it's advisable to, to not do the one-stop shopping. I think you'll get a better range of services by choosing the best experts in their, in their individual fields. Stan Tech is very good at traffic. We know Gary Hebert very well. It's too bad Mr. DeRosa's not, not interested, but I would try to go back to him and see if you can convince him otherwise. I guess one concern that I wanted to raise was just making sure that whatever firms that you folks are considering, you, you may want to run those by Jeff Engler sooner rather than later, just to make sure there's no conflicts of interest. You don't want to go too far down the road and then suddenly, you know, Jeff says, gee, you know, these guys worked for me in the last project I did. So I don't know if he has relationships with any of the firms you're thinking about, but I would recommend you, you, you vet that sooner rather than later. And then the, the only other question I had for, for the board right now is just on timing. And I, I, I logged in about five minutes late, so I might have missed this. But did the applicant invoke his right to appeal the safe harbor determination to DHCD? And, and if so, you know, is, is it in agreement that that tolls the 180-day deadline?
So the town of Manch, the zoning board of appeals submitted a safe harbor letter to DHCD on November 8. Mr. Engler has 15 days to respond to that. That period is up on November 23rd. To best of my knowledge, nothing has been submitted yet. But we have submitted our letter, which tolls, tolls the time.
Okay.
Okay. Um. And Mr. Hill, do you have any firms you wish to recommend to us?
I'd be happy to. And it probably makes more sense for me to send something in writing to you either tonight or tomorrow morning.
That sounds good. Okay, thank you. Next up is Steve Gang of the Conservation Commission. Mr. Gang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You could probably get the peer review you need, either from a one-stop or from a individual specialist. But I wanted to argue from the Conservation Commission standpoint that at least in environmental issues, local knowledge is quite useful. You know, within the limits of any conflict of interest from having worked on, on the project before. And by that, I mean someone who already is familiar with Manchester and, and our surrounding terrain and watersheds and streams and ponds and whatnot. One reason we chose Mike DeRosa as peer reviewer in the Anrad phase in front of the ConCon was exactly that. The second thing I want to say is, is just from decades of professional experience making these calls between hurting a whole variety of individual specialists versus trying to give it all to Anderson Consulting or somebody else who could, could one-stop it. And that is with a firm that's big enough to have all of those capabilities at the level that you want, the town of Manchester is going to be a very small client. And the odds that you'll get the kinds of interaction among professionals and even the top-notch folks in each of those departments are pretty low. So I, I guess I would just put that out as a caution. You need to be careful that as a one-time relatively small client, we could get what you hope for from a one-stop firm.
Do you have any suggestions as to environmental peer reviewers?
Yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to send those and get Chris Bertoni to, to edit it tomorrow morning.
That would be great. Thank you. Next up is Luke Legere. Could you please identify yourself and where you're from?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Luke Legere, McGregor and Legere. I represent the Citizens Initiative for Manchester Affordable Housing, Inc. I first just wanted to also offer to suggest some consultants like Mr. Hill. I do a lot of land use and environmental work. So I work with consultants like the ones you're looking for here every day of the week. So I'd be happy to also submit a list. I suspect some of the names on all the lists we'll be getting might, might be duplicative, but better to get them twice than, than not at all, I suppose. So if that's helpful, I'm happy to do that in the next day or so. And then my, my only other question, just sort of picking up on, on the, the timing piece and understanding that, that the 180 days is told. If I'm remembering correctly, from the first night of hearing, you had suggested that traffic would be the first issue to be considered. And I think the date of December 1st was, was mentioned. And I, not, not to get too far ahead of ourselves if the board was intending to discuss this later, but I'm just curious if that's still, still the plan. Because I, I also heard later in the evening that I believe the applicant agreed to, to do another traffic count. So I was just curious if the plan is still to go ahead on the first or given what's developed since that was mentioned, if, if that timing has changed. Thank you.
Yeah, that timing's changed. We, we were overly aggressive. I, I think what we're, we're hoping to do is to probably reconvene on December 8th just to identify the peer reviewers and then probably meet in the beginning of January to do the traffic.
Thanks. I, I would call you optimistic, not aggressive, but in fact.
And we'd love to get a list of consultants from you. Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak with respect to the peer review? If so, please raise your hand on Zoom, because that's the only way I could see you.
Madam Chair, this is Sue.
Hi, Sue.
I, I just wanted to note that Town's attorney, Mr. Pucci, is available and he actually has his hand up.
Thank you, Sue.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah. Mr. Pucci?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for recognizing my yellow hand there. It's the first time I've ever actually raised one. I apologize for coming late to the meeting. I used the, the link on your posted notice. And I, I was sitting alone in the room. I just emailed everyone. In the room. I just emailed everyone and uh. Several of you very kindly sent me the link, so here I am. Um, I missed the beginning of your conversation. It was my understanding tonight you were actually going to. Go ahead and, and discuss and possibly pick a peer reviewer on traffic and is, is that not? What then you're going to do at this point?
No, we, we didn't receive um. Enough input early enough to be able to do that, so what we decided to do tonight is. Make sure that we've given the public opportunity. To give us input on the peer reviewers and help us come up with a broader list. Um, go, I mean, for instance, the one that was recommended for environmental. Michael De Rosa determined he had a conflict of interest, so we couldn't represent the board. Um, we heard two from traffic, but one came in at four o'clock. This afternoon, so now what we're planning to do is to reconvene probably on December 8th. To pick peer reviewer and, and I think. Where, if we either one-stop or separate ones for um. For various aspects.
Okay, that sounds great. So I, so just a couple of guiding principles I just wanted to um. Uh, mention and, and I agree with what Attorney Hill said, and I see Attorney Legere here. I, I know them both well and. Uh, they're very well respected and, and I appreciate their comments. Um, I just want to um, note for the board, you know, peer review selection, it, it's great that you're getting input. It's entirely within your province to make that determination. Um, I do, you know. Wholeheartedly support your um, reaching out and getting suggestions on those issues. And thinking about different peer reviewers for different issues as opposed to one firm. And just making the right decision about uh, how to go about that. I would um, also note. You know, it's totally your um, authority on the selection of peer review. But the regulations do encourage and um, you know, cooperation with the applicant upfront. You do want to do those conflict checks. Uh, get proposals so that the um, applicant can weigh in with you if they object and, and. You know, they don't have the right to veto your selection, but. You know, as I said, the regulations are very clear that you should uh, engage in a cooperative effort. In the selection of the peer reviewers at the beginning. And somebody had mentioned, you know, it's, it's good to determine early on if there are any conflicts because you don't want to be. Farther down the line in your uh, public hearing process and, and find out that you don't have a traffic peer reviewer or somebody like that. You know, on some of these crucial issues. And just one last um, thing I just wanted to clarify for you. That, that stay doesn't really come into effect until there's an, after DHCD. Issues their determination and then there's an appeal. So while you're free to kind of reach an agreement, um, that, you know, you could then file with the town clerk with the applicant about. Extending your period out. You know, right now you're, you've opened the hearing and your 180 days is running. Once DHCD issues their determination. And when and if there's an appeal of that filed, then your process is stayed. Um, and you know, that appeal could come from either the party, the ZBA or the applicant depending on that. DHCD ruling, so I just wanted to mention that to you that. When you get the DHCD ruling. Um, and, and say they do not accept your uh, safe harbor declaration, that they disagree with it. The board is going to have to make a decision whether it wants to appeal that determination. If you go ahead with that appeal, then your process is stayed, absolutely. Um, so the, and, and in the, in the uh, reverse of that, if DHCD rules in your favor that they uphold that determination. Then the applicant will have the right to appeal that to HAC and that will stay your. Uh, public hearing process while that appeal goes forward and, and then gets resolved. So you, you just want to make sure that in this interim period you are. Um, you know, continuing your public hearing. As a public hearing with a, you know, a continuation date certain. Even if you're only anticipating a five or 10-minute discussion. You know, at your next session, you do want to continue doing it with a date certain and an actual continuance date. And then see where you end up. Um, at that point, and then, you know, w- once you're underway, if there's no appeal of that DHCD. Determination, then you want to clarify with the applicant, okay? What, you know, when, when do you consider a six-month period to run and just get something in writing that? Um, we'll, we'll set that out for you, so I just wanted to note that.
Could, could you please um, provide us with additional clarification on that aspect because? That is not consistent with what. We were told in our last meeting. We were told that the 180 days is extended from, from. The time we file the safe harbor letter until the DHCD makes a decision. Um, and I mean, that's what Mr. Silverstein told us last time.
I think it was just a little bit unclear at the time how that was expressed. In other words. You know, you, the, the applicant has, when, when you made that declaration, the applicant had the right or not. To proceed with the hearing. And it was my understanding that the applicant did in fact go ahead. And make a presentation, even if it was um, you know, somewhat abbreviated. And then you did. Uh, Jonathan told me today, because when I saw your meeting notice, I, I was concerned that it wasn't a continuation of the public hearing. And Jonathan did confirm to me today before I got on uh, the Zoom with you, um, that. It, it, you did continue it in a proper way. You, you continued it to a date certain to tonight. To make the, have this discussion on peer review, so I, I, I can get you something in writing on that um, offline, but. Uh, the only thing I would recommend on that tonight is that. When you, if you're going to continue to the first. Just, you know, have the motion, a formal, um, continue the public hearing to, to that date certain. And then what, when you have that discussion on the first. Continue it again to the, to the eighth and then proceed that way.
Yeah, we will. Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? That wishes to say anything regarding the peer review process? Okay. Um. So, um. Members of the board. Are we in agreement that we want to add to our, uh, well, hold on just a minute. Sue Brown? You raise your hand?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to know if um, if Mr. Angler got um, confirmation from his attorney. That it would be suitable at this time to um, to pay for um, the traffic review. I think we thought. Maybe yes, but I think he wanted to, to check with his attorney last time we spoke, so I just wanted to, to see if we're on with that.
As a show of good faith, that was my intention, but I, I honestly, I thought the town was moving forward with Stantec. Um, now it sounds like it's open, they're getting proposals from everything. So I would, I would prefer to see uh, the, you know, as his right, as, as. Uh, Mr. Pucci explained, you know, as the applicant, I have the right to see the proposals from the different peer review consultants. Um, but I, it's my understanding the town uh, would like to do traffic first, you know. Likely, I guess now in early this January. So, yes, I mean, I, I, we'll see what the scope is and the fee, but. As a show of good faith, I had made that commitment to get traffic started. Um, however, I'm not going to be authorizing additional funds until. The, until the ruling of safe harbor is final. I mean, as I explained to the board, the hearing, that I'm sure the board can appreciate. If I can't, DHCD found in favor of the town, I, I presume. The town is going to tell me to uh, you know. Good luck and farewell. In which case, I'm not going to put a lot of money at risk and I'm sure the board understands that position. And, and took that decision knowing that, so. But with that said, I will put a little bit more money at risk to get traffic going. Um, just in the interest of time and then we'll see where everything goes, but we did get the town's. Safe harbor uh, documentation on November 8th. And my attorneys are preparing our response, which should be ready shortly, which obviously the town will receive a copy of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, now I'll turn it back to the board. Is the board in agreement that we're going to take in additional possible? Consultants that people are going to give us lists and then we'll look at those and. Um, determine which ones to go out to RFP for. And then we'll get those responses back and. Be prepared to. Meet on December 8th and make a decision?
Yes, that's fine with me.
John?
James Mitchell, yes.
Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Catherine?
Um, and let me just make sure I understand here. We're going to receive proposals, review them individually and discuss it our next meeting?
Correct.
All right, yes, I am in agreement with that.
And make a decision.
Great, I can do that too.
I don't know.
Um, Brian?
Uh, okay, I can't vote twice, but yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sean?
Yes.
Okay. So, um. Mr. Angler, are you available on December, Wednesday, December 8th, if we continue the meeting to that date?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I am available, so just to confirm then, December 1st, you're continuing, but it's only going to be um, administrative.
No, we're not, we're not doing December 1st.
Oh, I thought you would have been advised to do that because you announced it at the previous hearing, but all right, so yes, December 8th is fine. I, I'll be myself available on December 8th.
Yeah, the plan is to continue to December 8th. We didn't vote to continue to December 1st.
Okay, fair enough.
Did it to tonight.
Okay, so on December 8th is, is just the selection of the peer review consultant, so. I plan to attend, but I, I'm not, I don't plan to bring any of my team because.
Right.
I don't think their participation is needed, so.
Right, and do you expect that the? It's my understanding they were doing the revised traffic counts this week. Do you expect that report would be available around? December 8th or?
Yeah, I would hope it would be available prior to then.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, you are correct, I think, and I should know this. I think the traffic counter, yeah, are being done this week. Um, so we should have that report, I mean, next week's Thanksgiving, obviously, but.
Right.
I, I intend, I, I mean, not much is changing in the report, other than updated counts. We don't expect the counts to be materially different, so it should not be a heavy lift for my consultant. Who's not here, so I can speak for him, to uh, turn this report around uh, in, in due course.
Okay. So. Do I have a motion to continue? This public hearing um, to. December 8th at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
John makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Catherine.
Catherine's second, okay. I'll take a roll call vote. Brian?
Yes, continue.
Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes, sorry, I don't know if you said Sean or John. I said yes.
Catherine?
Yes, continue.
James Mitchell?
Yes, continue.
Jim Dietrich?
Yes, continue.
And I vote to continue. So we will continue this public hearing. Until December 8th at 7:00 PM with the intention of. Making a decision on. The peer reviewer. Specifically for traffic, um, perhaps on the whole thing, but specifically for traffic. So that we can proceed ahead with the traffic survey. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
John moves to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second, Catherine How.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote to adjourn. John?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody? Did I see you, John?
Me, Catherine.
Catherine?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. Sorry, I can't see everyone. It drives me crazy. Okay, thanks, everyone. Um. See you tomorrow night for the regular ZBA meeting.
All right, have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Nice meeting you. Thank you.